Thank you all for coming this evening. It is the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is three minutes after six o'clock, Thursday, November 1st, 2018. Agendas are towards the front of the room up here if anybody does not have one and would like to. Before we begin the meeting, I would like to, on behalf of the council, congratulate our city attorney Eddie Fellaini on the birth of his baby dog. We begin each meeting with a moment of silence and the pleasure of allegiance, and this evening it will be led by Eddie Fellaini.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I give the roll call, please, Michelle?
Counselperson Allen.
Present.
Counselperson Azar.
Here.
Counselperson Crossan.
Present.
Counselperson DeBahn.
Here.
Counselperson Elliott.
Present.
Counselperson Morris.
Here.
Counselperson Nasser.
Present.
Counselperson Nation.
Here.
Eder present, one is absent.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to give 30 minutes for public comments. At this time, you can comment on anything that is not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, you will have time to speak on that when we get to that. However, at this time, anything that is not on the agenda, you can bring to us. If you decide you would like to speak, please come up, give your name and address for the record, and please try and keep your comments to around three minutes, just as a courtesy to others who wish to speak as well.
My name is Donald Hyde. I live in 1411 Poplar Street, Terre Haute. I've lived in Terre Haute all my life. Well, this is a speech I've been waiting to give for a year because we're now less than, well, we're four days away from when we wake up tomorrow morning for the election. I believe that the election we're going to have this October of 18 will be the second most important election in my lifetime. It will only be surpassed by the election of 2020. And again, I don't care if you agree with me or you don't agree with me, you'll see in the end I'm right. Now, even saying that, I don't know. The reason I've been here for a year trying to get you to talk, trying to get you to tell people what you're thinking about or what your decisions were made on, is because that's what I see as the problem with the Democrat and Republican Party of this county, of the city, of the state, and especially of the nation. We aren't voters, we're all citizens, we go on the poll and vote, and we have to vote on what we know about the candidates and what they're going to do, help us in our lives. And by the way, one of the things that I've not heard mentioned at all, and it's one of the fundamental facts of life, is that everybody, no matter who you are, rich or poor, don't care your color, don't care your race, everybody goes through a journey in life. And I don't care who you are or what you've done, in that journey you started as a child. And how old you are, depends upon how long ago it was, you were a child. You thought as a child. You acted as a child. Then you grew up, you became a young man, had responsibilities, whether you did them or didn't, agreed or you didn't agree. Then, as you grew older, you became a family member. What? You got a job, a career, or an interest that you were into. And then you got to be middle-aged. Every one of these journeys changes your opinion, changes how you vote, because there are problems that affect your life at that time that doesn't affect everybody else, because everybody's going through that journey. You as a, when you take the oath to become a state council member, or county council member, or state representative, or senator, or the President of the United States, you need to remember that life is a journey, and that everybody is in different parts of that journey. So there's no one issue or two issues that matter. What matters is what you as a candidate are going to do. You ran for office, and you should have a reason for running for office, especially if you win. And you need to come forward and tell the public, tell the voters, hey, I really believe in this. I really think we can do this. I'm not hearing that. I've been here now for over a year. Maybe two people have impressed me, not because I agree with them or I don't agree with them, but they impressed me with the idea that I actually know why they're on the City Council. I can't say that about everybody, and I'm not going to say who it is. Same thing is true about the Vigo County Council, and that they're worse. They keep everything quiet. But as bad as the City Council is, as bad as the County Council is, the worst of the worst is the school board. I mean, they get elected, and it's almost for life. They've got to do horrible things to get unelected from the school board. But they spend more money, as far as our tax dollars are concerned, and as far as what we can do in this county, they spend more money than the County Council and the City Council combined, yet they keep that a secret. But what they keep most a secret is their decision-making on how they spend that money. I'm not calling anybody a thief, I'm not, I don't care about that. What I care about is communications. Communicate with the voters why you believe what you believe, why you tried to get this passed or that passed. Now, I've already told you that's a done deal. We're going to build a new jail. Why? Because I lived through this before, and so have you. If you're old enough to have been around in the '70s, you were around when Vigo County had the worst record of segregation there was in the whole state. And the federal government was saying, hey, you know, in 1954, they said desegregation was the way we're going to go, and you guys are behind the eight ball. And they had filed lawsuits, more than one lawsuit, more than one group, government was after us. I know you don't believe this, but it's true. I was there as a person ready to go to high school in the ninth grade, graduating from Woodrow Wilson, we had these discussions. They had no choice but to build a north and a south because they wanted to end one big argument, and they had it going on for five years. If we're going to close down the high schools and consolidate them, how are we going to do it? Everybody had a different idea, and it was all based on segregation. Can we segregate these schools? So, the answer became clear. We'll just build one school north, and we'll build one school south, and everybody will be bussed to it. Or, if you've got money, or your family's got money, and you've got a car, you can drive there. We'll put a parking lot in both schools. And if you look at north and south, that's exactly what happened. And I was there.
Mr. Hyde, if you would please...
I know, I'm getting ready.
Thank you.
The problem is this, all these years later, we're getting the same trouble. We're having, what I mean by kick the can down the road is put off doing something about any subject, I don't care what the subject is. You kick the can down the road until finally we are forced to do something about it, and that's what the jail's all about. And guess what? The reason I'm pointing out the Vigo County School Board is because they know that they're going to have to build a new north and a new south. And I agree, we don't have to build it in the next 10 years. We need to repair the schools and buy us time, but more importantly than that, I'm willing to, and I think that the community as a whole will be willing to build a West Vigo. I'll tell you why. If you're smart, and I'm talking about the City Council, County Council, I'm talking about everybody in this area, you will have a construction bid put out for a new West Vigo High School, you'll talk about it, how it's going to be, and more important than that, you will make sure it gets built to the top level. And then whoever builds that building will have the inside track of building a new north and a new south. And by the way, north, I said a new north and a new south, this idea of building a super school, that's stupid beyond belief. We have enough problems with north and south now, we don't need to have a one big school and have all the big city problems. We've already got them, we don't need to encourage it to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay. If not, then we will go to corrections of the journal.
There are none.
Communication from the mayor.
There are none.
Reports from city officials.
There are none.
Reports from Board of Public Works and safety.
There are none.
Reports from standing committees.
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees.
There are none.
Items previously tabled.
There are none.
Tax abatements for confirmation.
There are none.
Items on second reading.
There are none.
Items on first reading.
We have one. Appropriation 11, 2018, $6,000 from Fire Department Non-Reverting Number 0750 to Precious of the Closette Number 444010 for $2,000, and a Public Relations Number 439190 for $4,000.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, members of the council, Norman Lattimer, Assistant Fire Chief, Chair of Fire Department. This is an appropriation from the newly created Fire Department Fire Prevention Fund. We've never spent any money from that, from that budget. We'll start that from that fund. We're asking for $6,000, $4,000 to be placed into public elections. Those are the things we purchase for the children, helmets, stuff like that, all the technical materials, and then $2,000 for first equipment. We plan on purchasing a pop-up shelter for some events we go to, tables and sturries like that, and that's for fire prevention, that's natural. And some of those people have those types of stuff, if you will, it's a more people thing.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on appropriation 11, 2018? Counsel. Counselwoman Crossan.
Yeah, can you, can you tell us now how much is in that fund currently, about, if you know?
Yeah, I do, there's not, I mean, that, you know, obviously, the form of this appropriation, like you guys decided to put on it, about 25,000. It's moving all the time, people, you know, we inspect every, every day, and so those people are invoiced, and maybe 30 days later, we get a bill in, but usually it's, right now, it's growing from about, about 25,000. So this year, which, you know, I'll be reporting to you in March, but this year, as an early report, we're probably looking at, you know, between 25, maybe, maybe close to 30,000 by the end of the year, that we'll hopefully be able to collect, you know, for that fund. And that's all through about $4,000 through donations, and the rest of it is through inspections, reports, people want a copy of the fire report, stuff like that.
Thank you, Ayil.
So we need to move to vote, to vote.
Yes, Chairman.
Counselman Azar.
I move that we take action on appropriation 11, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselman Azar, seconded by Counselman Morris, that we take action tonight on appropriation 11, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we can now take action on appropriation.
I move...
Counselman Azar.
I move that we approve appropriation 11, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselman Azar, seconded by Counselman Morris, that we approve appropriation 11, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appropriation 12, 2018, $90,630.19 from EMS Non-Reverting Number 02700027 to Transfer Fire Department Fire Training Number 0511.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, members of council, Jeff Fisher, Fire Chief. This is our annual 5 percent transfer from the EMS Non-Reverting to Training Non-Reverting. This is the second of two transfers for this year. You're more than happy to answer any questions.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on appropriation 13, 2018?
12.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Appropriation 12, 2018. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselman Azar.
There are no further questions. I move that we take action on appropriation 12.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselman Azar, seconded by Counselwoman Aller, that we take action tonight on appropriation 12, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Action can now be taken.
Mr. President.
Counselman Azar.
I move that we approve appropriation 12, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselman Azar, seconded by Counselwoman Crossan, that we approve appropriation 12, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Appropriation 13, 2018, $636,000 from Community Grant Crossing 0492 to Paving Number 432105.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, members of the council, Chuck Innes, City Engineer. This appropriation reflects a reimbursement from the state, from our community crossings grant that we received last year. We need to bring that money down into the paving line to pay ourselves back. You have to answer any questions.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on appropriation 13, 2018?
Yeah, I've got a question. Exactly what was built with the money?
Thank you. Chuck, would you like to answer that?
That was a Seventh Street project that we did last year, removing the old trolley line and rebuilding Seventh Street.
Counselman Morris.
Chuck, I've had a few calls about paving north of the Union Hospital on Seventh Street. Is that on the radar for next year?
For next year, we're by done with paving this year.
Okay.
Ayil. Was there anybody else in the audience who wanted to speak on that? Counsel. Counselman Azar.
Couple things. Chuck, are we applying for a grant for next year?
Yes.
What are some of the projects on that?
That was for the seventh, the south end of Seventh Street.
Okay, speaking of the south end of the Seventh Street, I've had a few phone calls inquiring why the first phase had new curves, but the second phase did not get new curves. Can you explain how that decision's made?
That was, that was a decision we made internally. The curve had got a line, wasn't really bad enough, I guess, to warrant replacement. It was on the north side, so...
What was the extra cost if that was to be replaced on the second face?
Oh, it would probably be $200,000, $300,000.
Ayil.
Mr. President.
Counselwoman Aller.
If there's no further questions...
Oh, I...
That's what I was going to do.
Go ahead. Counselwoman Aller, please.
If there's no further questions, I move that we vote to vote.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselwoman Aller, seconded by Counselman Azar, that we take action tonight on appropriation 13, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Action can now be taken.
Mr. President.
Counselwoman Aller.
If there's no further questions, I move that we approve appropriation 13, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselwoman Aller, seconded by Counselman Azar, that we approve appropriation 13, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appropriation 14, 2018, $90,000 from Fire Department Non-Reverting Contractual Services Number 02710028 to Overtime Number 412129.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, members of council, Jeff Fisher, Fire Chief. This is to move money into our overtime reimbursement. That's all this is. You're more than happy to answer any questions.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on appropriation 14, 2018? Counsel.
Mr. President, if there's no further questions, I move that we take action on appropriation 14.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselman Azar, seconded by Counselwoman Aller, that we take action tonight on appropriation 14, 2018. Counselman Nation.
Thanks. Jeff, can you tell us what, what we're on track to doing in overtime this year, please? Excuse me? What's going to, what's your best guess as to how much we're going to spend in overtime this year?
As of today, we're about 200,000 over our budget, about $750,000.
About 750, and today, you're asking for 90. Are we going to get another one for 160 sometime before the end of the year?
No. We have enough, this is the only one that I'll become the fore to counsel for. The rest of it, I can move in my one series to offset that, but this here is just coming from the non-reverting to reimburse.
Okay, thanks, Ayil.
Counselman Azar.
One of the questions that I'm sure will be asked is with the safer grant, that was to kind of reduce the need for overtime. Can you explain why the increase over budget for the overtime?
Because we're down on our manpower. We had people retire, we had people leave on disability, so our numbers were down. We're in the process of hiring 60 firefighters. They're going through the, the training at this time with PERF.
Ayil.
Mr. President.
Counselman Azar.
If there's no further questions, I move that we approve appropriation 14. Second.
No. Wasn't there a motion on the floor? There was a motion on the floor.
I thought there was a motion just to take action.
We didn't vote on it.
There was no vote on that.
You're right.
There was no vote on the take action.
And that motion on the floor was...
How much to swivel, swivel?
Yeah, and that was...
Counselperson Azar and Counselperson Aller.
Okay. It has been moved by Counselman Azar and seconded by Counsel...
When you hit my age, you forget things.
Then we take action.
I was hoping I was going to slide through, but there's a couple of questions.
Okay, it had been, it's on the floor by Counselman Azar, seconded by Counselwoman Aller, that tonight we take action on appropriation 14, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can now take action on that.
Mr. President.
Counselman Azar.
If there's no further questions, I move that we adopt, approve appropriation 14.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselman Azar, seconded by Counselwoman Aller, that we approve appropriation 14, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
General Order 8, 2018, Amendment to City Code, Chapter 8, Article 1, Section 8, Dash 24, Specific Maximum Speeds, Dobbs-Dale Street, Dobbs-Glynn Street, Ferndale Drive, and Hullbrook Court.
Petitioner.
Counsel. Counsel, I don't know if anybody's here on this this evening. Generally, how these speed limit ordinances or reductions work is that our offices contact either by one of the council members or by a concerned citizen. We, we then contact the council person, if they haven't already, to make sure that there's going to be some sort of a sponsorship on, on the ordinance itself. We forward that information then along to Chuck Innes over at Engineering to give us an opinion, and that's what's before you here today. These streets, I believe, are all located in Dobbs-Glynn, and that, that's the course that it took to get before you here today. I, I know Counselman Elliott was one of the sponsoring this, he's not here this evening. Again, I can answer any questions. I, I know Chuck just left, but I know that there were no issues from Engineering with regard to this ordinance. So we're lowering, lowering it to, it would be, those would be 30 mile an hour that are going to 25.
25. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on General Order 8, 2018?
Yeah, I'd like to get some clarification, and not just for me, but I assume for you guys as well. Where or is there any in this area you're talking about, any school bus stops that are anywhere in that area? Could you clarify that?
I am not aware. It is a neighborhood, so I wouldn't be surprised if there's school bus stops.
Counselman Morris.
So, were the citizens motivated to do this? Is this, we got phone calls, numerous phone calls. I know Earl's not here, but...
I know there was one point person that was contacting my office that I worked with to get this...
Representing this area.
And we worked in concert with, with Earl as well.
Okay. Ayil.
Mr. President.
Just for an issue.
Since Mr. Elliott isn't here tonight, I think it might make sense for us to just leave this on the table until he comes back next week, let him speak to it, and let him explain what's going on. It's just a thought, somebody just wants to make a motion to the contrary, I'm fine with that too.
On the table.
No, you don't have the table.
We don't have to. It's all voted on. So if there be no motion to take action on this this evening, we will go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda.
Resolution 14, 2018, transfer of $30,000 in the Fire Department Budget.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, members of council, it seems like a long time since I've seen you last. Jeff Fisher, Fire Chief, this here is to reimburse our captains' line on them. We promoted, we had some captains retire and then go off on disability. Before their actual time ran out, we went ahead and promoted some lieutenants to captains due to the fact that the captain's was about to expire. So, we just went over it, and I do have money in my budget to reimburse this line on them.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on the Resolution 14, 2018? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselwoman Crossan.
Yeah, Chief, is this, I just want to make sure I understand, it's a situation where we just had some overlap of the captains who are retiring and the newly appointed captains?
The, the seasoned captains were still receiving a paycheck, but they took vacation time to run out their, their time till retirement, and this here was just to replace those positions. They were still in the books, but we went ahead. Like I said, our captain's line, our list was about to expire, and there were some good candidates on that list, and we wanted to get those guys promoted.
Okay, and this is coming from...
Medical, surgical, and dental.
And we have access there?
Yes, yes. Now, just to inform you, I will be coming back to you next month, where we did the same thing with our lieutenants. So there's a little lapse there, too. Same situation.
Jeff, is that all contractual on the number of captains, lieutenants, and so forth?
It is not.
Okay. Ayil.
I, I misspoke. It, it is. There's a captain in every house, but we have a, a couple floating captains in order to stay with those numbers. As far as the floating captains, those are not a contractual issue, just the stationary captains in the firehouses.
Okay, so with the retirements and so forth, did we have to fill those positions?
Did we have to? Yes and no.
Okay, could you explain?
Explain, because we had a captain of Station 6. That house had to be replaced with a, a new captain. As far as the floating captain, that one was not contractual, so we did not, but like I said, we had some good people on that list, and the list had expired, and those people would have to retest and get on a new list.
So you needed the ones for the house, but you didn't need the ones for the floating?
Correct. But I have two captains retiring next year.
When did you, when did you, when did the retirements take place? Because there's been something that we budgeted for 2019 instead of transferring money from a line to a different line?
Right, as far as next year, it will work its way out because we have two captains retiring next year.
So why, what was the sense of urgency for the floating positions to be filled?
Because of the people that were on the list.
That's the only reason why?
That's the only reason why. It was coming close to the end of expiring the list.
Okay. Ayil.
When is that expiration date for the list?
It is the first of the year. First of the year.
Thank you.
Michelle.
As a reminder, it's a resolution, so you do not need to vote to take action.
Mr. President.
Counselman Nation.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we, I move that we vote on Resolution Number 14, 2018. Do we pass or confirm?
Okay, okay. It has been moved to approve Resolution 14, 2018 by Counselman Nation, seconded by Counselman Garrett. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post? And that passed. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Resolution fifteen two thousand eighteen, a resolution concerning the international paper site.
Petitioner.
I can take this. Uh, as you all remember, last month, um, we, I filed this, uh, along with councilwoman Crossen, and, uh, I think that we're, uh, still awaiting a third-party, uh, opinion from the, um, county side, uh, but I, I haven't heard anything one way or another, and when do you expect that, so...
Any ask comment?
Counsel, uh, councilman Nation, I apologize, I wasn't able to grab you before the meeting. Um, I received a phone call this afternoon from Michael Wright on behalf of the county. My understanding is that in short order, the, uh, opinion letter will be coming, and I was guaranteed that that letter would be given to the city no later than Wednesday of next week. Once that becomes available, um, and I will reconfirm, although I believe that I will most certainly be able, be able to share that with the council as soon as it's made available to me, I will distribute that to the council.
So Wednesday of next week would be the time for a meeting of next week. That said, Eddie, have you given any further thought to this yourself as the city's council? Or has anything changed from your perspective?
I, I don't know that anything's changed from my perspective. I'm obviously very interested, and as I'm sure you are, to see what's in the opinion letter that they receive, and I, um, we may get that as early as Tuesday. Again, obviously, the government's gonna be shut down Tuesday, but I think we'll have ample time to at least have an initial take come our Thursday night meeting to have a more informed discussion at, at that time.
Okay, aye, open up.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on resolution fifteen two thousand eighteen?
Good evening, Cat Goodwin, twenty-two fifteen North Tenth. My question is, depending on what that letter says, what difference does it make if they say the same or if they say something different? Um, I think we all are pretty sure that you're not gonna get a letter that says, oh, forget it, we decided that we do need to rezon the property. So obviously, next week, you're gonna get a letter that says, well, we agree with the initial, uh, decision of the county attorney. So I'm just wondering if we could just get, what difference is it gonna make on what that letter says next week?
My name's Jerry McLean. I was born here, and I've lived here all my life, except for about ten years when I was in the Army and doing some other things. And I've been practicing law here for the last fifty-four years. I would like to discuss a little law with you about this issue of rezoning. I think the answer is in your own zoning ordinance. Now, as I understand it, the county commissioners are saying that they want to build a sheriff's office, and that'll house, I don't know, maybe five, ten, a dozen people that work there. And then, uh, as an incidental use to the sheriff's office, they're gonna have a jail that'll have, uh, several hundred inmates and quite a sizable staff. And, uh, and they say they're, they're building, uh, an office, they're not building a jail. Well, and the question is, is whether they have to have a rezoning, or whether they can just go ahead and build an office without a rezoning. There are two reasons that a rezoning is necessary. One, one is a jail is not an incidental use to a sheriff's office. An incidental use is one that is customarily incidental to, subordinate to, in purpose, and serving the principal use. Now, the principal use of a jail is a jail. Principal use of a jail is not to serve a sheriff's office. It's the other way around. The second reason is that you have a separate zoning classification for penitentiaries. And if you have a separate zoning classification for penitentiaries, then a penitentiary cannot be an incidental use to some office. Your zoning classification for penitentiaries says, uses permitted, facilities for the incarceration of persons ordered detained by local, state, or federal officials. That's what the use is for the classification of penitentiary. That's what a jail does. Incarceration of persons ordered detained by local, state, or federal officials. Since you have a separate, independent classification for a jail, a penitentiary, that cannot be an incidental use to something else. Now, further in your ordinance, it says that to, to have a penitentiary or, or a jail, you have to get rezoning from whatever it is now to that classification. And that rezoning requires an amendment to the ordinance. And an amendment to the ordinance requires that it be submitted to the council. You're the people that make an amendment. You are the people that set the classifications in the first place. You are the people that can amend the classifications, and that's that. That's all there is to it. Now, county commissioners can, can say, well, the, the principal use here is a garage, and, and somebody's house is incidental to that, but, of course, we know that's not reality. They can say, we're building an office in the jail, which is much bigger and much more expensive, is incidental to the office, but is that reality? The name that they want to give to the jail is security annex. Now, nice euphemism. I'm reminded of something Shakespeare wrote several hundred years ago, that, uh, what's in a name? A rose by any other name would smell as sweet. A rose is what it is. Doesn't matter what we call it. A jail is what it is. We can call it a security annex, but it's still a jail. We can call a, a toilet a comfort station, but it'll still smell like a toilet. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public who would like to speak on this?
Donald Hyde. And again, earlier, I talked about communications. That goes for everybody in this room, everybody in this county. I was not a big fan, but I was one to say uncle to them building the jail out there. And I questioned, and I said to his council, we're gonna pay a lot of money for gas if we build it too far away from the courthouse. That's gonna cost us extra money down the road we'll be paying forever. Because I was unaware of something that I just became aware of in the newspaper. There is a group that's got financing, they've already bought the property that was part of the paper mill, and they're waiting on the contracts to come through, and they're gonna put an entertainment center there. A public entertainment center, and they're gonna build a new construction that's gonna house over a thousand people for music concerts. I was unaware of that, and I believe everybody in this county is unaware of that. Again, when you don't inform the public of all options, then we are left and, and dumped. Now, does this all go drop through? I don't know, but neither do you. With that in case, I also, we, I warned you last time I saw you, the one business that sits at Ohio and First Street on the west side, literally across the street from your already-built, uh, work release program, that property is available. Why the city and the county don't get together and buy that property and put the new jail there, cutting down greatly on the walking, the distance of travel. It puts it around the same area that the current jail sits in. And again, I stand by what I've said all along, for God's sakes, when you build this one, make sure the contractor builds it so it'll last at least sixteen to seventy, eighty years, in other words, way past the twenty years to pay it off. But I do believe that we have options, and I do not believe the time is running out. With what they did, hiring the assistant things to improve the jail, that buys us time. We should use that time and do things right. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Charlie Williams, fifty-one East Long Ridge Road, lifelong resident of Terre Haute. Uh, I, I think you all know how I stand on, uh, the jail being on the international paper property. It's not just me, it's the entire Riverside board that feels that way and has felt that way for a long, long time. Appreciate your, um, interest and your proposed, uh, resolution, and your courage to stand up for the zoning law, and wish you well on that. Mr. Hyde made some interesting remarks. I'm not, we, we all read the same newspaper. I didn't think that the purchase had been made, but I think it's a very, very timely topic that's very positive. I attended yesterday's county commissioners' meeting, and it's interesting, because nothing was said about that. We explained to the county commissioners that we were meeting, Riverside officials were meeting with a developer at four o'clock yesterday afternoon, and that developer expressed interest and said that he wouldn't be interested if a jail were next to him. So, it's, it's a tough issue, but this morning's paper, whether the purch- property, I didn't think that the paper said that the property has been purchased. I don't think the deal is, is done. It's an interesting prospect. It is certainly something that we've talked about in Riverside for twelve years. This kind of development, this could be, it could be terrific for Terre Haute and Vigo County. I don't know Mr. Drake, but I know of Mr. Drake. I think he's been enterprising the whole effort at Show Me's, his testament to his, his, uh, vision, his courage, his abilities as a businessman, um, so... But if you look closer at that, and you look closer at the story, and we're gonna build fifty-five hundred, uh, fifty-five hundred seat amphitheater, and we only have two hundred parking spots? I'm not critical. I wish if, if Mr. Drake gets this done, I hope it's wildly successful. If it is, I think we're gonna need twenty-two acres for more parking. If you all watched the World Series, there was, uh, the baseball stadium in the middle, it much smaller than all the parking around it from the airplane view. That's a pretty good mental picture. Do we want, uh, uh, and by the way, I think if that's successful, there's plenty of room for splash pad, there's plenty of room for athletic facilities. A lot of, uh, concerts and fireworks are held in baseball stadiums. Certainly, the success of the rec suggests that maybe we could use a, a larger stadium, and maybe some, uh, foreplex, uh, foreplex beside it. And the city needs new tennis courts. And, uh, there's cer- there's been interest expressed to Riverside about an indoor athletic facility. So, we covet that sixty-four acres, and we are very interested in developing it in its best possible uses. The developer said, put a jail there, I'm not interested. This developer apparently is okay with it, but will he have enough parking? Seems like a very interesting question to me. Uh, we, you know, so, I, I'm, I think that's a positive of the announcement from yesterday, even though it was as surprise as Mr. Hyde explained, and I was in a meeting with the commissioners just yesterday morning. So, I hope it, uh, is, I hope that the sixty-four acres are put to its best use. We have worked, the mayor and others have, have tried to help us plan Carrington Road and First Street, just the same way we planned the Wabashiki, and the way Indiana State has helped plan, planned north of Wabash Avenue. I, I wish we could be more forthcoming on the long-term best impact of the international paper property. I wish you well with the decision on your zoning, but I think it's clear cut. So, good luck. Thank you. Sure.
Counselman Nation.
Charlie, I appreciate your comments about the announcement from, uh, yesterday. I was surprised that the paper, anybody did interview you about the announcement, but my question that I've gotten from some of my constituents is, uh, Riverside's position has always been that nobody will want to develop on that property if a jail is there. Is it the fact that a jail's there and not this development, or any development at all? I know you said that there was another developer that said that they wouldn't, uh, develop there with the jail, but this one says that they would. So, I guess I'm having a hard time explaining that to my constituents. You think you can explain that a little bit better?
Well, Riverside's not perfect. We're certainly invested in twelve years of visioning for the community. We've tried to plan that, that area. The sequence of events makes me wonder if IP hasn't always been the site they had in mind for the jail. Certainly, that occurs to me. In terms of, uh, but the key question with yesterday's announcement is, if Mr. Drake is wildly successful, where will he park all those cars? Uh, Amy, do you want them in your neighborhood? I, I, you know, it's, are they gonna park in the neighborhood?
Can I make comments?
I go.
I, I don't know if I read it wrong, but didn't they say they're gonna have paving for two hundred, and the rest was gonna be on grass?
Wouldn't that one was...
I was trying to call it up. So I don't know if that's the answer, but I, maybe I read it wrong, but I thought it was two hundred paved lot, and then the rest would be on the grass.
Now, that's what I read, too, Don.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if there's room for fifteen hundred on the, including the...
Well, we all remember what happened at our air show with parking, didn't we?
Yeah, I got a few calls on that, sir, but I, uh, successful air show, I might say.
Yes. Counselwoman Crossen.
Well, and I, I assume that, uh, Charlie, just wanted to make sure, but you weren't, you were addressing that particular issue as parking, but in terms of the multiple uses, you were talking about the whole property, is that correct?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and we've had conversation with, with Mr. Card about the Western Tar property. Mr. Card has held away opportunities that would continue to be industrial, where they would rail in and truck out. Mr. Card has held that away, like, that has to be a friend and neighbor, but he wants the best for Terre Haute and Vigo County, too. And is that just more industrial use? We've got a once-in-a-century opportunity in this community to take the biggest parcel on the east side of the river and make it a gem that will shine and bring people here. Are we gonna, are we gonna give that away to a jail that could be at Thirteenth and Pullman, or could be on the, on this very site? You know, as recently as yesterday, Judy Anderson told people, this is not an option. Two, just three years ago, the architects who were engaged gave them two options. One was for twenty to twenty-two million dollars, rehabbing the existing jail. They conceded that that, that's not a good bet. It planned a, a brand-new jail on the parking lot. Judy continues to tell people, you wouldn't sell it to her. Judy continues to tell people, "You wouldn't sell it to her." I'm told that you would have sold it to her for a dollar. When's that story going to be told? And I've gotten that from redevelopment officials. So, when is the story going to be told? And, you know, I would choose the costing of the county $40 million, but if you did the math yesterday, I think the Citizens for Better Government has to say somewhere around 22 million. So, the 7 million-dollar jail is going to be built. Okay? If we go back to 45 million, what's the math on that, Chair? And, but, in August of 2015, they proposed 29 to 32 million. Where did, where did that opportunity disappear? And why couldn't we put, if Hamilton Center co-locates, why can't it be on Honda property? Indiana State's been more than 40. We've got a once-in-a-century opportunity to shine this property. So, in addition to the question, is just the lost opportunity cost? Are we going to sell it for a jail? Are we going to settle for a jail? Do you have any more? I don't?
I've never heard that story about $1 for this property here.
Well, you might, you might ask some redevelopment officials. Because it was under, it was offered to the county for a dollar.
All the parking lot and everything over here?
Yeah.
That's new. I've never heard that one.
I've heard that.
I yield.
Well, we don't hear a lot. What about the, what about the assessment that came out yesterday, Tuesday? What about those recommendations, very similar to what were made, were made in 2005?
And you just rarely ignore it.
Is this thing going to happen this time? And when's the story going to be told?
Yeah, I agree with you. Two days.
Any more questions? I do think that there's a real opportunity, and I wish Mr. Drake well if that transaction goes forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak?
Good evening. Lisa Spence, 220 Barton Avenue. With all this information coming at us pretty quickly, I haven't had too much time to think about the logic of this, but what strikes me is that if there's no problem with building a jail on that property because there's another developer who's willing to build next to it, then it seems like you could perhaps happily bring it forward to be rezoned properly via your process as a penitentiary, have it rezoned, and then this person who doesn't mind building next to a jail would go ahead and build. So, why, in light of this new information, do we need a second or a third opinion about the process, which is yours and that you own and that you all understand and work with every time? Why is that even necessary at this point? This guy will build, that's been proven, so bring it forward. I think you all should expect a rezoning request. The county owns the property. People who own property and want to use it for a different purpose, bring it forward for rezoning. There shouldn't be a problem because they've got someone that's willing to build next to it. So, I think that's what you all should expect. As Mr. McGlon so ably described earlier, there is a place for that in the current code. I think that's what you all suggest. I don't see a reason for another opinion at this point. You all should vote on a rezoning request next week. That's it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public who would like to speak on this resolution?
Andre Cumberall, 2129 North Allen Street, Terre Haute. I see the commissioners are zoning the land. I see them as being a property owner, just like anybody else, like I would in my own backyard. If I were putting an office in my house and putting a jail in the backside of that, I would expect that you, as the city council, would ask to, need to request a rezone, and I would expect you to do the same for the commissioners, being the property owners of that land. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Counselor Nation.
Andre's hypothetical situation is interesting. I expect the county commissioners to go through the same process as everybody else. I think that's really the main, that's the point of the resolution that we're going to be considered, that is, that we're talking about right now, that we could vote on tonight, if we want to, or that we could vote on next week. I would also expect if Andre brought forth such a, on the face, on the face, preposterous rezoning situation, I would expect that our powers that be would stop him from doing that before that situation even came to the council, or in this case, the Board of Zoning Appeals. I would expect our city attorney to be able to issue an opinion that would clarify on where the other, whether this, where this goes. Does it go to the Board of Zoning Appeals? Does it go through the usual channels that everybody else uses? I would expect our city engineer to have lots of input and lots of interest in this And what I wouldn't expect is for us, for those people, the city engineer, the city attorney, the mayor, to look at Andre's, to look at Andre's proposed zoning and to say, "You know what? We're not sure, so why don't you, Andre, hire another attorney and have that person give us an opinion so that that person can tell the city council and the Board of Zoning Appeals what to do?" To me, the failure, one of the many failures in this, is that it was not stopped by the people in the Area Planning Commission, the staffs there, the people in county government, the staff there, the people in city government, the staff there. That's why this is so unusual. That's why we've never seen anything like this before, is because we've got a lot of people who don't want to get caught up in this situation, and they're trying to pass the buck. And here we are, being asked to consider, or to wait to consider something that we've never really asked anybody to do before, to my knowledge, to go and hire another lawyer to tell our lawyer what to do. I yield.
Mr. President.
Counselor Morris.
I agree with Todd's position on this. I do want to say that this is referred to, this opinion that apparent, I think is the word you used, Eddie, that Mike had used to you. This opinion's going to come out as a third-party opinion. It's not a third-party opinion. It's an attorney's opinion to his or her client. And their duty is to that client, in this case, the county commissioners. Their duty is not to this community. It is certainly not to the city. It is certainly not to the city's legal department, and it is certainly not to this council. When I had clients come in my office and ask me for representation, one of my first questions after getting their name and address, et cetera, was, "What is it that you want to achieve? What is it you're trying to achieve that you need legal assistance with?" They would tell me. What they told me helped shape the advice I gave them. So, I think we can be pretty sure that what this attorney or attorneys were, have been told, was, I'm sure, told to them in good safe, but nevertheless, was told to them from the perspective of their client, who is the county commissioners. So, I don't feel like my position can possibly change from tonight to next week, because my position is this. This city has zoning laws, and we expect everyone in this room to follow them. And if they own a piece of property that is not zoned for the use that they want to use it for, then they have to come to this body and ask for a change in the zoning of that property and have to substantiate why that is appropriate and necessary. And if it is appropriate and necessary and meets the other requirements of our zoning laws, we normally grant those. And if it isn't, we may say to them, or Area Planning may say to them before they get to us, "You need to tweak this, you need to do this," or we may say to them, "Sorry, this isn't going to fly this time." And to me, if we don't as a body, yes, the person who owns the property has to bring that forward, but if we as a body don't let the commissioners know that we expect them to follow our zoning ordinances and laws, then we have failed our community, and we have failed in our job. And I can't imagine that there's an attorney's opinion in the world that could come forward in a week that would change my opinion about that, because that's where we are. And I would like to see us go forward on this tonight. If, I don't see any reason why our position on it could or should be any different next week, but I am willing to allow for the comfort of other councilpersons if that should be their will. But I yield. That's my position. I yield.
Before I continue with counsel, I do want to make sure, was there anybody else in the audience who wanted to speak on this? Okay, then I will bring you into counsel.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Nasser.
Counselor Nation, you are exactly right. This is all new to us. We've never had to deal with something like this. My question, Eddie, what, if we were to pass this tonight, or next week for that matter, what would be the administration's thoughts on this? Would they still wait for the outside legal opinion, or would they go by what the council is wishing for? Because a resolution, I mean, we have a resolution saying that the administration will give us monthly reports, and we all know how that works out, and there's nothing ever happens with that. So, what will this resolution do in the eyes of the administration?
I can't speak on behalf of the administration. The resolution itself is really nothing more than a statement by the council on behalf of the entire council as opposed to one or more individual council members. I personally am very interested to see what comes from the county next week.
Okay, so, if we were to do this and site plans are still given to the engineer, it could still be up to the engineering department to agree to issue permits, correct?
Yes, that's still the gatekeeper.
Okay. All right. I yield.
Counselor Morris.
I just want to touch base on something. I've not been asked to sponsor, well, I wasn't asked by me either, but, um, on this new development that just came out this week with wanting to do the music venue thing down there. I know I was called about parking. Tuck isn't here, so I'm going to rely on Eddie to answer this. I mean, they would have to come with a building permit to the city if, for the venue. I'm not, I'm just one of, what I'm called out on here. And with the building, proposed how many square feet the building is, they would have to have that many parking spaces, correct?
Yes, there are parking requirements based upon the type of use and the size of the building.
Per square foot?
Yes.
And how many people it would hold?
Yes, there's a direct correlation.
Thank you. I yield.
Counselor Morris. I just want, last week, we were adamant that they pay for the study, and now we're talking that it's going to be biased because they're paying for it. I mean, that's what I'm interpreting you saying. So, I mean, I have, I'll vote no tonight if we decide to. I just want to see the study. I mean, we debated a month ago to do this, and now we're deciding not to do this. I'm sorry. I yield.
It was never a request of this council that they do a study. The mayor, the mayor said something in a, really a conversation or an interview, saying, you know, "Why don't they get a third party to give them an opinion?" And we discussed that last week, but it was never the city that was going to do that. The city isn't part of this. Nobody from the administration met with another attorney about this matter. This is a county-driven thing.
I'll disagree with you, but I don't think we want to get in a piss-and-mass until we get?
I think that's it that's sailed, my friend.
Mr. President.
Counselor Nasser.
First of all, what's before us is not whether we agree that a jail should be there or whether a jail should not be there.
That's right.
That's not what's before us, whether there's going to be a venue, a music venue or not a music venue. That's, that has nothing to do with what's before us tonight. What's before us tonight is a resolution questioning whether the county has legal right to build on that property without going through our zoning. Now, I have heard from Mr. McGlon, who gave a very convincing argument for the zoning. Mr. Goodwin made the comment that no matter what they say, they're probably going to come back and say that they believe they have the right to do this. So, I would personally, I know where I stand on it, but as a professional courtesy, I would just as soon hear from their attorney, biased or unbiased, hear what that attorney has to say, weigh that with what Mr. McGlon had to say to us this evening, and then go from there. I mean, it sounds to me like even if we pass this tonight, it's a piece of paper, period. That's all it is. It's a piece of paper, they can still do what they want, then we get into a big legal battle. I would just as soon, as what Mr. Morris said, I would like to hear just what they have to say. We have next Thursday. They're not going to build a jail between now and next Thursday. They're not going to build a venue from now till next Thursday. I think we can give it a week to listen to both sides and go from there. And again, I pretty much agree with what Pat said. They're probably going to say they have the right to do. We, at that point in time, that's when I believe this council can weigh that situation, pass or reject this resolution, and then go from there and see where that leads us. It may lead us into a legal battle with the county. I hate that because I don't like to see county and city against each other. I think we should work together, not against each other. And it's a shame that it's come down to this, but again, if the law states that they should rezone, then that's what they should do. If they can prove beyond the shadow of a doubt that they don't have to rezone, then that's the way it should be. But I am willing to listen to at least what they have to say. That's my position on it. I yield.
Yes, Ms. Morris.
Just to remind everyone of the council bills, this is a resolution, so you do not need to vote to take action, but if no one makes an action, it will be considered defeated. So, you need to make some sort of a motion.
Okay. Mr. President.
Counselor Nasser.
If there's no further discussion, rather than have any kind of defeat of this, which I would not like to see, I would like to move to table this until the meeting on Thursday, next Thursday, November 8.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Nasser, seconded by Counselor Morris, that we table Resolution 15, 2018 until next Thursday's meeting. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, it has been tabled.
Move to adjourn.
It has been moved by Counselor Nasser to adjourn, seconded by Counselor McGarrettson. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for?